Good afternoon and welcome to the planning board meeting for for the, excuse me, I'm not sure what number the planning board meeting this is, but but for the 21st of December. I'd like to now call the meeting to order. And before we begin, I'd like to make introductions of the planning board and staff. Sean?
Sean Fahey, member.
Maggie?
Maggie Oldfield, member.
And myself, Meredith Hall, serving as chair, and our staff that joins us. Tim?
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Josh?
Josh Lee, Assistant Planning, Assistant Town Planner.
Thank you. And Julia?
Julia Getman, clerk.
Great. Thank you all. So at this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order, opening the public hearing. Winter Valley, 600 Canton Avenue, the expansion of site plan approval. And we can invite Ned Corcoran to join us. I believe he's already in as a panelist. And James, anyone else, Ned, you want to bring in from the team? And Ned, you're still muted?
Sorry about that.
You're welcome.
So John Downey and Jim DeVellis, I see, have been promoted and Sarah McLaurin, she's on as well.
Great. Ned, we can't hear you. I think you just muted, maybe?
No, I've just been quiet.
Oh, okay.
Very difficult for me, I know.
Okay, okay. So, welcome, if you'd like to.
Thank you. And thank you for, the board for agreeing to this special meeting. It's an unusual time, and I know this is an unusual request, and we really appreciate the board's indulgence on that. And before I start, I just, I think we owe a thank you to Marina Fernandez and Chase Berkeley, who in the last several days did a significant amount of review work on the plans. We spent a lot of time with them yesterday with Jim DeVellis and really appreciate the time that they took, the effort and energy that they put in, and I know that they have submitted positive memoranda to to the board for both the stormwater as well as the sewer capacity issue. So we really appreciate the time that they took. I think there were a couple of deliverables from the last meeting that we provided. One was a revised landscape plan, adjusting some of the plantings to become more deer resistant, and that was submitted. And I know Cheryl requested a plan demonstrating how we calculate the height. And so John Downey has submitted a completely new set of architectural materials, some minor changes to floor plans based on some recent updates and conversations with HUD. But he shows the calculation on the the two elevations, Plan A 4.1 and 4.2. It shows the grade and the height calculation to the ridge of the roof at 45 feet. As I said, we met with Marina and Chase. We've amended the Stormwater Operations and Maintenance Plan that was submitted for their review and approval yesterday. And I know that they reviewed and approved that. We kind of walked them through that process before finalizing that plan. And I think the significant highlight that, and Jim can get into more detail if necessary, is that the wetland replication area down below sort of doubles the capacity, if you will, to manage and handle stormwater. So all of the stormwater from the site currently flows down and into that wetland. By increasing the size of the wetland, we take, we not only have the the stormwater detention basin that's proximate to the building, but we double the capacity because down below we now create a much better and larger area to receive that ultimate flow. And I think based on that, Marina was very pleased that, that, you know, understood and was pleased with the outcome here. The last thing I would mention before I open up to the board is that I submitted to Tim a draft of a decision and prepared to walk through that as appropriate. And so with that, I'll hand it back to you, Meredith, and any other questions or concerns that you might have, and we can, we're prepared to share a screen as appropriate to review the engineering details, to review the architectural changes, and I can share a screen to review the draft of the decision.
Great, thank you, Ned. One of the things that I had asked him just to give an update on is the status where the Conservation Commission is. We had a great sidewalk with the Conservation Commission. Thank you for inviting the planning board on that. And, you know, I know that they are pleased with the the wetland replication. And, but, Tim, they have not yet met. And so just, if you want to just give a little update on your conversation with the Conservation Commission.
I think Ned would actually be able to be in a better position to talk about the Conservation Commission process. He's been, obviously, at those hearings and can kind of speak to those issues. I know that that hearing has been progressing, but there's been a couple, a couple follow-on issues that the team has needed to address. So I'd actually ask Ned to speak a little bit more to that.
Sure. The CONCOM agreed to meet next Wednesday evening, December 28th, which is still within the timeline that we're, that we need to meet. There's one last issue remaining with the CONCOM, as I understand it, they requested a tree inventory, inventory of all trees, four inches caliber or greater, being removed from jurisdictional areas. We've completed that. We're preparing to submit that to the commission for review. And we're prepared to discuss with the commission a tree replacement budget so we can close out that part of the hearing.
Great. Thank you. Um. Any questions from the board members? And then I'll open it to the public if there's any questions from anyone in the community. Sean?
Sure, I just had a few questions. And thanks, Ned, for the presentation. There was, I noticed on the revised, it looks like there's a revised decision that there was a, at one point, Ned, it had indicated that lighting would turn off one hour after close. And I see on a, an edited document that that's no longer there. Is there, is there an off time for lighting?
That's a, I'd ask Sarah that, this decision, the draft was the, was from a decision that was for site plan approval that was entered into for the Little Sprouts project over on Blue Hill Avenue. And in that case, you know, there's a, it's a, it's a commercial type of business, and there is a closing time. And so the note, the notion was that lights would go off an hour after closing and then only be available on an emergency basis, because this is a residential facility with people coming and going. I took out the one hour after closing because there's no closing. I wonder if Sarah has a specific time as to when maybe lights would go out.
You know, Ned, my confusion, my confusion, pardon me, Sarah, my confusion was really caused only by that. I saw it in an initial draft, and then I saw it out, and I wasn't sure how that occurred. Your explanation makes sense to me. I would be interested in Sarah's answer, because I think the proximity of this building is close to residences. So I am curious, but I imagine, Sarah, your answer would be that any lights on or off all occur at the same time, regardless of where the buildings are.
Right, so our lights stay on, they come on, they're on timers, they come on at appropriate time every evening, and they stay on until dusk. We've not had complaints from neighbors about a kind of overlighting during the overnight. Our residents here, they need that lighting for, not just for safe footing, but just for a sense of security. So I would anticipate Building 6 would have lighting on. We can certainly talk about lighting in the back of the building where you don't anticipate foot traffic at night to have a lower setting. But we will need to have them on in the parking lots overnight.
Certainly, I wouldn't want to create an unsafe condition for anyone. And that was my only concern with the neighbors being near enough to the building. It'd be only the back of the building that I would have any concern with in terms of reducing lighting so that it doesn't interrupt what they would, you know, have for otherwise, you know, an environment, you know, free of light, as it probably is now. So that was one question. I had a second question related to the operation and maintenance plan. And as I read it, it indicates that, obviously, the, there's, there's the greatest contaminant is the, what's on the surface of the pavement, sanding, salting, and treatment of pavement surfaces, you know, washing into, you know, what will be created for the, for the, for that basin out in front, that wetlands basin. It indicates that there are two sweeping scheduled per year, and I'm curious to know if, if that's adequate. And what, I guess here's what concerns me a little bit. Most of that pavement contaminant occurs during the wintertime with sanding and salting of surfaces. And, you know, we seem to have these, these winters now where we change from winter to spring, and we have rainfalls, and we're washing into our, you know, our, our, you know, wetland areas contaminants, you know, unlike in the past where it might stay cold for a long period of time, and whatever contaminant sits on the surface until the springtime comes. So I guess my question is, and happy to hear from our engineers, is too adequate? Or maybe is it such a situation that both of the sweeping should occur during the time of the year when it's most subject to having contaminants on the surface of the pavement?
Okay, through, through Madam Chair, if it's okay, I'll answer for the record. Thank you. Thank you, members of the board. My name is Jim DeVellis. For the record, I'm the civil engineer on the project of DeVellis Serene. So I do have two on there, and pretty much what Mr. Fahey had said. It captures the time when it's the worst in the spring and fall. Some places do require four or ask for four when we go through the commission. And you see that on larger parking lots or commercial properties, but on this particular one, when you go up there, there's landscaping crews that work through there in their hand blowers and cleaning. It's a very clean site. So it's, we certainly could do four, but I think two is adequate on this.
Okay, and Jim, I do note that, I do recognize that it's noted that, you know, the Conservation Commission has the opportunity to comment, right, on the operation and maintenance plan if, if they feel it's not, you know, sufficiently addressing what needs to be addressed. So I, you know, I wouldn't want to burden Sarah with anything that she does need to be burdened with. I just want to make sure that what you create succeeds like it should.
Yeah, and that's, to be honest with you, that's why I put that note in there, that that's our standard, and we're up to discussion if the commission wants more, then it's kind of an open door on that side rather than saying two and, and no discussion.
Okay, I'm happy, I'm happy with, with that. I don't have any issue with that. It's, there's a, there's a chance to manage that if it becomes problematic. And my last question is, I, I read, you know, what looks like extractions from requirements of the NFTs permit. And I guess it just caused me to ask, is there a NFTs permit required for this, for the project, Jim?
Yeah, I think, well, NFTs is anything over an acre, and I think it is over an acre in total. And I usually put a note in there that the NFT should be filed by the contractor, because it has all the specific contractor information, the means and methods of how they're going to construct the emergency contacts. We provide it for them if they want it, if they can't do it. But to do it now is premature, just because we don't have all that information from, we, it hasn't gone out to bid, and we don't have the contractor yet.
Yeah, sure. And it's, I mean, I think, I think we're safe, because if it is over an acre, it's a requirement by the EPA, so that will happen. So as long as, when I saw some specific notes that almost seemed similar to what's required by NFTs, I wanted to make sure that there will be a NFTs permit. Yeah. Meredith, that's the extent of my questions.
Okay, thank you. Good question, Sean. Maggie, did you have any questions?
Um, so no, I think, I'm just glad to see the revisions in the landscape plans, and thank you for replacing the plants with natives. And and I think for the long term, I think they'll, they'll be great, and they'll thrive up there. Um, I did just have a background question, because I remember what you said at the last meeting about for HUD getting financing, that they only wanted one bedrooms. But I know that people with disabilities can live up at Winter Valley. So I had a sister with special needs, and so I'm kind of wondering, just in the future, would HUD ever? Like, two bedrooms are necessary, because my sister lived with my mother, and my mother cared for her. So I think this is just a question moving forward. I think sometimes two bedrooms are needed for, you know, a parent taking care of a child or a child taking care of an adult. So I know that probably isn't an appropriate question for now, but I just think it might be nice to be able to have some housing options where a two-bedroom might be necessary. So I feel like just having a one-bedroom, you're excluding some of the people who are in the greatest need. And then the other question is, my grandmother, as I said before, lived at Winter Valley for a very long period of time. I think it's a great site. I think it's a great use of space. I think it's really pretty up there seasonally. She lived in Building 1, and I do feel like throughout the course of the building of Winter Valley, Building 5 is much more attractive than Building 1 is. So my fear is maybe Building 6 isn't quite as attractive as Building 5. And I think maybe the difference is because it's being built as a passive house. So maybe those architectural features might not go into the passive architecture. But I just think it might be nice if it looked a little bit more like the, the Building 5, because I think Building 5 is a really attractive building. But I totally understand if that can be possible, and I'm not really hung up on the architecture of it. But it's just such a pretty site, so it'd be nice to have a little bit of continuity in the architecture.
I agree. Sean, you have your hand up. Is that a new question?
It is not. I apologize. I just took it down. Thank you.
Great. Um, was that it, Maggie, or is there anything else?
Yep, that's all that I have.
Okay, great. So now I'd like to open it up to any questions from the public. If we can see, there's any hands, anyone would like to speak? Branch has been brought in. The panelist. Any other? Let's see. I'm not seeing any hands up. Is anyone else seeing a hand up? Okay. All right. Tim, is there anything else that you would like to add before we, we go through the decision draft?
No, just to reiterate Ned's point, you know, we, we made sure that Engineering and DPW took a good hard look at this. The applicant was very cooperative in a working session and in our correspondence with them about sewage issues and the drainage issues. So we definitely appreciate that. It's obviously a very sensitive site, given some of the other projects around that are very high profile. So we wanted to make sure, you know, this got under the same microscope as everyone else. And I appreciate everyone's hard work. So that's it.
And Meredith, with respect to that, I recommended yesterday in a conversation with Marina and Chase and Tim that they ought to get going on some peer review. Get some agreement, get some peer reviews in place, because you do have some additional stuff coming at you probably February timeframe, and it would be helpful if you had peer review in place and ready to go when applications were coming in.
Thank you. Definitely. That's something that we'll be asking for. I'm sure the planning board.
And I know that one of my clients understands that they'll be paying for it, so.
That's good. Yes, and it was, I am grateful for Maria and the DPW and the Engineering Department for their memo that came in yesterday. I think they actually had some good comments on the memo as well, which I think we would like to see incorporated. And they're, you know, ADA compliance, they're, you know, they're, they're some very just important things. And, yeah, so why don't we, you know, why don't we walk through the draft, Ned? If you want to pull it up on the screen, that would be great.
Okay. We'll see that.
Yes.
So in the first paragraph, I corrected a reference in the bylaws relative to site plan approval. It was actually Section 8D of the zoning bylaw. I capitalized site plan approval, because I think it's, it's a formal thing, and took out commercial development, because that related to another project. And it's a, this is a form that I did not draft previously. It was drafted by, by the town as part of that process. The first thing I did is sort of, I redelineated the plans so that each sheet was, was identified. So the initial set of plans was a site plan approval, a notice of intent plans for 600 Canton Avenue, 10 sheets prepared by DeVellis Serene, Inc., and identify each of those plans as they were dated. And then indicated we submitted a drainage report and stormwater maintenance plan, which hadn't been referenced earlier. And then I delineated the six sheets originally submitted by John Downey Architect. Then got into the public hearing and the specific request for supplemental information, as a result of which we submitted revised Sheet 7, the planting plan, and revised architecturals, which include now a copy of the concept rendering that we presented at the last meeting. And then in addition, after a meeting with the town engineer and the DPW director, the applicant submitted, which is, needs to be added here, submitted an amendment to Stormwater Operation Maintenance Plan dated December 20. Thereafter, the hearing resumed to today, and after discussion, we say the hearing will be closed. From the decision perspective, as Sean pointed out, I did remove the issue of lighting. But it strikes me that we could add perhaps a sentence that deals with lighting in the rear. You know, lighting should be installed as required to maintain a dark sky compliant manner. All lights, we could say, lighting in the, lighting in the rear of the building be turned off one hour after dusk. And then emergency lights will be controlled by a motion sensor and only turned on when triggered by motion. The landscape and plans are being installed as shown on the revised plan. All plantings, I took out planting along the boundaries, because we're not planting along site boundaries. That was, again, related to another project, but will be planted in accordance with the landscape best practices and maintained in such a manner to assure their long-term survival. And then they say, "Stormwater management systems, including stormwater structures, the detention basin, and the wetland replication area shall be maintained by the applicant in accordance with the amended stormwater plan as approved by the town engineer." And those are the three conditions that, you know, I placed here, other than the fact that everything gets built in accordance with the approved plan. I didn't know if you have additional suggestions for additional conditions. Obviously, we're, we're open to those, those ideas.
Are there any further suggestions? I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm good as well.
Yeah, I'm also good with that, too. Thank you.
What I would propose to do is delete draft, put in execution. execution. I'll accept the changes and email the final version to Tim as soon as we get off this call, as soon as we finish the hearing.
That sounds good, Ned.
Thank you, Ned.
Thank you.
So, so I am comfortable with approving this. I would like to just say that it would be, and I think this is not a problem, Ned, correct me if I'm wrong, but based on the approval of the Conservation Commission and just subject to the recommendation, which I think you've somewhat stated in here, recommendation of the Town Engineer and Department of Public Works memo, recommendations in their memo dated twelve twenty.
How about if I come down to the, to the end? It was approved by the town engineer and the and director of Public Works in accordance with the memo and board dated December How's that?
Great. Should we say the planning board not to, I mean?
To the planning, yeah.
Not to state, but it's obvious, but yeah, just. That's good. That takes care of that. So then it would be approval sub- subject to the approval of the Conservation Commission?
I think it's just two separate approvals. You know, you each have jurisdiction over certain things. And I, and I think, and 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 I would suggest that it's your approval is site plan approval. Their approval is an order of conditions. We need both. It becomes a little unwieldy if you're sort of going back and forth. And I would recommend that you each.
That they'll take their separate vote based on?
Vote your, vote your decisions based on what's in front of you.
And both are needed. Okay, that's great.
Yeah, I I absolutely, we need, absolutely need both.
Great. Any other thoughts or comments from members of the board?
Good.
Meredith, I I have no further comments.
Okay. All right. Tim, is there anything else you would like to add?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Then at this time, I think we need to take a motion to close the public hearing.
To make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, the public hearing is closed. And now I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
A second.
Second? All right, I'll, and roll call, Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself. And to clarify, this was an approval of the Winter Valley Expansion Site Plan Approval. Okay? And the vote says yes, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
So I will get a final clean version of this together and then we'll be in touch. If we can get this signed before the end of the week, that would be great. So either myself or Julia will be in touch about getting this around for signature.
Okay. Terrific.
Thank you very much. This was, this was a terrific hearing. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you for everyone's hard work. Yes. Oh, now we need, sorry, hello, the board needs to make a, not, this is a motion to adjourn, Ned, you can leave. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I think Sean might have a lot of.
You guys have to stay here, sorry.
I know, we've got to get Sean back. Hold on. I was afraid that might happen. Can you get back on? Tim, I'm, Sean is trying to get back in. He got the message, so. There he is. Okay. Now, if I could have a, Maggie made a motion to adjourn. If I could have a second.
I will second the motion to adjourn.
Great. I'll, a roll call, Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The meeting is adjourned.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry for leaving so quickly.
That's okay. I was afraid that might happen. So our business, that's all right. Thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.
All right, take care. All right, yeah, bye bye.
Bye.